You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is June 18th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 18th, Michigan City City Council Meeting. Please silence all electrical devices, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, on a roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Mr. Coulter.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Mr. Przewlinski.
Here.
And Ms. Chilton.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
And everyone had a chance to review the June 4th meetings. Are there any deletions or corrections to the minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Dabney, I think you had your light on first.
I'll support.
Okay, Councilman Dabney, motion to support and seconded by Councilman Beatry. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. And, okay, the gentleman in the blue shirt straight ahead, yeah, do you work for, are you an intern? Do you work for the city? Okay, the only reason I'm asking is because I didn't know if you were a student by chance and you were taking notes for a class, because there have been other students that come in here and take notes. And I was gonna say, don't worry about taking a note, so all you gotta do is get ahold of the city clerk and she'll give you all the information you want. Just sit, sit back and relax, just sit back and relax. Okay? Yeah. Gail's got all the information you'll ever need.
He wants stuff to find them.
All right, moving forward, reports of standing committees, are there any reports of standing committees? Having none, the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Michigan City Finance Committee meeting did not meet on today, so we will be going over claims for Michigan City Riverboat Board Development Claim Docket for June 18th, 2024. Riverboat Fund Number 2235, eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars ninety-three cents. Riverboat EFT Fund Number 2235, zero dollars. Board Development EFT Fund Number 2504, zero dollars. Total claims eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars ninety-three cents. These are for accounts payable Laporte Chrysler, Inc. Also, for the City of Michigan City, 2024 Riverboat Fund Statement of Cash Position, unexpendable balance fiscal year to date, June 30th, 2024, seven million nine hundred forty thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars fifty-six cents.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. Any questions about the claims docket? Is there a motion to accept the claims?
Some.
Support. There's been a motion to approve by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilman Beatry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Claims are approved. Reports from boards and commissions, any reports from boards or commissions this evening? Very good. Reports of special or select committees? None? Reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments?
Good evening, Council President, City Council. I just wanted to give a couple of reports from the Michigan City Police Department. First, to start off with, I left some more flyers for the Michigan City Safe Citizens series. We still have two more series, two more, um, two more classes left out of the series. So far, we've had approximately 50 people participate or sign up. And I say that we have 35 responses online, but we've had some people who've come to class and we filled in. So approximately about 50 people so far respond to the course we've done. Gun safety, which we handed out gun locks, and talked about gun safety. And then we did Stop the Bleed last week, which was through LaPorte County EMS. So we have about 14 the first day and that LaPorte County EMS had approximately about 20 people show up. Fire is this Thursday, so still time to sign up. I think there's approximately 15 people signed up for the fire section. So if you still wanna sign up, still time again, 4:30 at the Michigan City Police Department in our community room. And then next, the last Thursday, which is the 27th, we have personal protection by the police department. 4:30 again, still time to sign up, left some flyers, or you can go to our Facebook page, QR code and sign up that way. Next. We put out a press release, we've been receiving a lot of complaints about fireworks. So we did put out a press release today, just reminding everybody about the fireworks ordinance. And we will try to force to our best of our ability, any violations of that notes. We see several complaints on our Facebook page and I've seen people in the public and about the fireworks. So we will be enforcing, looking into the fireworks, so please, we do, just wanna remind people that fireworks are, the ordinance basically says it can be discharged on following dates and times, June 29th through July 3rd from 5:00 PM until 2 hours after sunset, July 4th from, from 10:00 AM until midnight, July 5th through the 9th from 5:00 PM until 2 hours after sunset, 10:00 AM on December 31st until 1:00 AM on January 1st. Anyone discharging fireworks outside of the set dates and times subject to being cited, the fines for fireworks late offenses are fifty dollars first offense, hundred dollars second offense, and two hundred fifty dollars for your third or more offenses. Just wanna remind people about that. Then lastly, I wanna invite the council out to our graduation for our Youth Leadership Academy. It'll be Friday at 1 o'clock here in the City Council chambers. Feel free to come out and see the kids as they graduate, get their certificates. Also, the keynote speaker for the event will be Assistant Park Superintendent Will Walker, so come on and support him. We have approximately 50 kids running around the police department now and throughout the city with our Youth Leadership Academy, and so far, everybody has went home safely, so we're doing good. Two days in and got three more to go, so just wanted to invite you all out for the graduations. And if any questions, I'll take those.
Any questions, other chief? Any comments? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other department heads? Or I don't see the mayor here this evening, Ms. Nylob. Are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Are there any communications?
No communications.
Are there any resolutions?
No resolutions.
And our first ordinance this evening on first reading, Ms. Nylob?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending the third sentence of Section 54-152A of the Michigan City Municipal Code, commonly known referred to as Application for Employment with the Michigan City Fire Department, and this is introduced by Ms. Lee.
And would the author have anything she'd like to add at this time?
Yes, as a liaison for the firefighters, the local union, Michigan City Firefighters Association, Local 475 and Fire Department are working on changing and updating their ordinance, and so this is just the first part of those changes. And so originally, in the original ordinance, it says advertising for employment only through the newspaper. So they're updating that now. So it says the daily newspaper, the city's official website, the city's social media, and any other platforms as deemed relevant by the city's Human Resource Director.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public? Wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any further council comments? Any council comments? Having none, this ordinance will be held over for a second reading at our next meeting. Ms. Nylob, our next ordinance on first reading. And if you would, Ms. Nylob, this ordinance isn't very long at all, but if you could read the whole ordinance, I would greatly appreciate it.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating Section 2-419 in Chapter 2 of the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish a restricted and non-reverting fund for the fines collected for violations involving city trees. Whereas the city would like to establish a specific fund to receive a dispersed fund for fines collected by violations involving city trees. Whereas they need to exist to create a restricted non-reverting fund to be used to receive fines collected for violations involving city trees and specify how those funds may be spent. Now therefore, be it ordained, the common counsel of the City of Michigan City, Indiana, that Section 2-419 shall be created in Chapter 2 of the Michigan City Municipal Code and shall read as follows. A, there is hereby established a tree violation fund. This fund shall be restricted and non-reverting fund. B, the purpose of fund shall be for receipt of funds collected through the city ordinance violations involving city trees, and more specifically violations of the following. One, Section 1702, landscaping requirements of the joint zoning ordinance. Two, violations of Article 2, trees, shrubs, and other plants of Chapter 102 vegetation. C, the revenues in the fund shall be used by the city for expenditures directly related to the following. One, planting, maintenance, and removal of city-owned trees. Two, equipment and supplies. Three, educational opportunities regarding forestry availability of the city. Four, marketing and promotional materials. Five, local match for grant opportunities subject to common counsel, preapproval of the same required by Section 2-326. The city shall use the monies in the fund for any other purposes those stated herein, and such funds shall be administered by the controller. This ordinance is effective passage by the council, approval by the mayor, and any necessary publications, any necessary approval by the Indiana Department of Local Government by hand. And this is introduced by Mr. Przewlinski, Mr. Coulter, Ms. Moldenauer, Ms. Lee, and Dr. Cora.
Thank you, Ms. Nylob. Thank you. And do any of the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time?
Mr. President. I'm a liaison to the tree board.
Pardon?
I'm the liaison to the tree board.
Okay.
And this was brought up, and so based on this ordinance, there are no new fines or anything like that, but the money, if there are any fines, instead of the money going to the general fund, it's going to go into a restricted non-reverting fund so that it can be utilized to, for the purposes that was read into the record today. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Thank you. Any of the other authors like to add anything at this time? Having none, anybody from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none? Any further council comments on this ordinance? Okay. Then this ordinance will be held over for a second reading at our next council meeting. And that leads us on to new business. And I don't think we have any new business at this time. Any unfinished business?
No.
And comments from the public?
I, Kathy Stransky, 223 Sparkar Ave, here in Michigan City. And you know I love the Second Ward, that is my stomping gun, I've been there my whole life, okay? And my school now has a brand-new backstop on the baseball diamond. And they took down the old playground equipment and are bringing in new playground equipment and they're reviving our playground. And I'm thrilled, we've already got kids coming out there, two mothers and two little boys this afternoon at the baseball diamond, and they were trying to throw the ball to the boys who were like four and five years old, so. But it was good to see that they're coming back to the playground. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on any items?
Pull aboard, Scott Melantour at Kenwood Place. Three brief things, I'd like to shout out to Assistant Chief, Police Chief Forker. He, he's already, you might have seen him in the press, but he was off duty at about 2:15 in the morning, his wife smelled smoke. Neighbor's house was on fire, he got out of bed and got the people out of their house and saved them and their dog. And he's already gotten an award from the police department for this service, as did his wife, but I just thought if anybody hadn't heard that, they should, and I think it shows the great service, dedication the men and women of our force have, and I think that's just a shout out to Assistant Chief Forker. There's also a lot of great stuff going on in town, I just wanna thank you all for being involved and for all the positive changes I've seen in town, it's really noticeable, we have a lot of things going on. The new pavement is going in, striping's taking place, and I know there's a lot of other things cooking. Okay, that's the good stuff. Two days ago in Chicago Tribune, there was a, an article where the, regarding the flock cameras. The headline is License Plate Cameras Help Solve Crimes That Are Creating Backlash Over Privacy Concerns. There's a lawsuit in Cook County right now over these privacy concerns, they're suing state police for the flock cameras and thing. And it's everything we've talked about before, but I didn't wanna bring it out, this is not just a Scott issue, this is a real issue. It's a red-along article, I can PDF and send it to you if any of you would like. Of course, we all know that there's been positive things done, but this article says there has been misuse by some police. A Leo with a beef against a boyfriend, affair kind of stuff, there's always room for misuse. I'm not suggesting that's taking place here. And if you get down to the end of the article, it's a long article. Again, police are pretty, it's a good tool for the police, but there are the privacy concerns. In New Hampshire, for example, it's a state law that that data is only collected for three minutes.
Good sir, summarize.
I'm trying.
Okay, you have 15 seconds.
New Hampshire State Law, which requires law enforcement to delete non-hit license plates within three minutes is one model. ACLU recommends destroying data if it doesn't match one a plate with 72 hours. That FBI license plate database is notorious and inaccurate with data that's either in error or not updated. I respect there's a three-minute limit, this has been the fastest meeting in history and there's nobody waiting to talk. I
Sorry, sir.
Find it a little insulting.
Sorry, sir.
Hold the line till
That is the rule of a council, and that is the wish of a council, for three minutes, so thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Wait a second, Paul. Wait a second, Mr. Przewlinski, Tommy.
Yes, Mr. Przewlinski, thank you.
Mr. Kavalik is
Yes, this is Tommy Kalavich from 1316 Ohio Street. We think we all wanna send our condolences out to the town of LaCrosse. About six days ago, another volunteer firefighter, Mr. Kenneth Caldwell, passed away in the line of duty. He came in for, died, 63 years old, died after coming fighting from a brush fire. Very sad, I think the governor ordered all the flags to be flown at house staff in his memory. I just wanna say thank you and then good night.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Go ahead, sir.
Paul Przewlinski, 1716 Washington Street. I, I'm here tonight to talk about trash, rubbish, whatever you wanna call it. Do we approve a levy at the sanitary district for our trash collection every year? Does anybody wanna answer that on Finance Committee or anything? Cause I think we do. But now, did you guys pass a resolution to not pick up our trash anymore? Did the sanitary district pass a policy not to pick up our trash anymore? So.
I mean, I can answer that, and the answer is no.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm getting to, then I guess the administration made a order or dictate not to pick up our trash anymore. I don't understand why I'm paying to have my stuff picked up and I can't get it picked up and now people have to pay for it. Has a fee structure been approved for that, may I ask?
No.
Okay. So why are the citizens of Michigan City, who are paying their fair share, being penalized for now for trash pickup? Say if they have a special pickup, we used to get two special pickups a year before. I don't understand why, for speculators, and you know what I'm talking about, over the last four years, coming to Michigan City, stripping out of home, throwing it in the yard in the sanitary district, picking it up, and it got way out of hand, but now this dictate comes out, no more trash pickup. Why aren't you, why aren't we focusing on the people who are violating this code or the two pickups a year? And you know what I'm talking about, because it's a lot of, a lot of different people who buy a home, strip it out. I don't know, maybe it's not going on that much right now, because I don't know if homes are really selling that, that hot right now. But it was rampant four years ago, over the last four years in the air. So what my, what I got a problem with? I'm a senior citizen and proud of it, but what about all the senior citizens and people who need a pickup for a mattress? You gonna charge them for, to pick up a mattress, to keep garbage, to keep that off our streets? I mean, when Mr. Kinsel ran that department, he made money down there, all right? And we didn't have a lot of trash on the, on the streets. So anyway, I made my point. The point is being is that the residents need their trash picked up, they're paying for it, and they better start getting it picked up, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak this evening? Anyone else from the public?
And any public?
Pardon? Yeah. You made it right on time. Yeah, everybody's allotted three minutes.
There you go. Hi, I'm Kathy Parker, 331 First Street, and I'm here to talk about an issue that is really just putting at a disadvantage some of our most vulnerable citizens, and those are the handicapped, children, mothers with babies, and that is the number of cars that are parking on sidewalks, parkways, and curbs. When a car, a car is on the sidewalk, children who are walking to school to the bus stop must walk in the street. And that's not right, because there are, there's a, there's a infrastructure for cars, that's the street. There's an infrastructure for pedestrians, and that's a sidewalk. And why auto owners are allowed to park on these, park illegally, which all of that is illegal, according to code, baffles me, and why the, the police don't ticket these people also baffles me. And the reason I'm bringing it up now is that the Eastport Neighborhood Association had a post about a mom who was upset that on the 300 block of Holiday, she was not able to take her mobility impaired niece for a walk, because there were cars on the sidewalk. So I mean, this can very quickly be dealt with, it can be over, this whole issue can be resolved in a month if the police department made it a priority to start ticketing those cars. They drive through the city, they're very, very obvious, but the police have to wanna stop and make those tickets. So I would challenge the council, and particularly Dr. Cora, I believe you're the liaison to the police department, is that right? Mr. Coulter, you're the Eastport rep. Challenge them, let's see how many of those tickets they can write in one month. And if they can bump that number up 60, 70%, their problem is over, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, and that's a very good, very good point you brought up there this evening. Very good point.
Good evening, my name is Sal Dunlap, 729 East Michigan Boulevard. To the lady's point, we are City Councilman here that parked across this damn sidewalk all the while, he's sat up here. All right? And it's a part of the culture that you let some things go by. And as easily as the lady pointed out, although it wouldn't become a priority, but a few tickets would stop that type of dumb mess. All right? I am, I felt to report to you what happened on Earth Day back in April. I went over to the post office and pulled up all the weeds in front, you all remember what that post office used to look like. I'm interested in bringing that back. We allow that, that building, it's architecturally beautiful, complimentary to all of us, certainly to the city. And the way that it has been denied the attention that it deserves is prostituting that structure, violating us in so many ways that we accept it, now we don't think anything about it, we walk right by it. And it looks like hell, now I did talk to the postmaster, who said that she was, she has sent on an RFP for bids on bringing that back, but it's got to include enough money for somebody to maintain it. I cut down quite a few of the volunteer trees south of the post office, they have grown back, so somebody has got to be there on a regular basis that once it is brought back to what it's capable of looking like, they need to have the resources to maintain it, and as to how we play a role in that, I really don't know right now. But that's something that we should really take advantage of. I pointed out at the, at the Eston Grove meeting last night, that the vehicles, the motorcycles rather, running up and down Michigan Boulevard is insane. They start there where the old petty's grocery was used to be, and by the time they get down to where I am, almost in the middle of the 700 block, they are flying, I mean flying, 70 to 80 miles an hour. And the chief was there, he heard us, hopefully some type of action is gonna be taken on that, on that effort. Again, I want to invite you to join me on a Sunday morning in driving through the community. It's interesting what you can take advantage of to see what's happening, to see who's doing what and who is not doing anything. We have a lot of vehicles in this city that have been sitting there for 20-some years, as I pointed out to the chairperson here, they're Detroit and Lafayette. A white hearse has been sitting there for 20 years, looking like death. And that's just an example of small things that we can do to contribute to all of us.
Sir, if you could summarize, please.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Hi, Brian Gross, 830 West Sixth Street. I was up here a couple of months ago, pretty much spoke on the last two subjects. I live right across from Pullman Park. Have a stop sign there, at Sixth Street and Willard. And there are constantly motorcycles and cars that don't even slow down. Some of them race down there from US 20 all the way down to the tracks, I imagine, I don't know. Hitting terrible speeds, and it's really bad when you got your windows open and it's 2:00 or 3:00 AM and they're doing it. Pullman Park, well, city ordinance says you're not allowed to drive over a curb unless there's a curb cut there. At Pullman Park, there are constantly people pulling onto the grass into a park with little kids and driving their vehicles all over the place. I called the police department this past week about 3:30 AM, because there was a large contingent of people out there making noise in the parking lot on Sixth Street. And I'm a couple hundred yards away from there, I mean, they were loud. And I would like to see a lot more enforcement of the codes that are already on the books as far as abandoned vehicles, people parking on grass, people driving over curbs that do not have curb cuts and are not paved, just all of that stuff. I think if we could start
I think if we could start curbing that and especially this, you know, the speeding's harder because somebody has to be there to witness it. But still, there are streets in this town where the motorcycles and the cars, you know, they just don't see any of the signals or obey the signals they're supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public who should speak this evening? Anyone else from the public who should speak this evening? Okay, having none, public, uh, comment is closed. Are there any council comments, Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about something that's happening tomorrow. Everybody's going to be, uh, recognizing, uh, Juneteenth and having Juneteenth celebrations, but there are a lot of people in the community that do not know, uh, what Juneteenth is all about. So I just wanted to give a quick explanation as to what happened and why we celebrate Juneteenth. Back in 1862, the Emancipation Proclamation was signed. Uh, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, which was supposed to be the document that would have freed all slaves in the United States of America. But there were still areas in the country that were still Confederate, uh, control. And three years later, three years later, after Emancipation Proclamation was signed, there were slaves who were still, uh, were the last slaves to be set free in Galveston Bay, Texas. Um, so like I said, three years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed, there were still people who were held as slaves for more than three years after that document was signed because there was still Confederate control. And so that date in 1865 is, is what is now known as what we celebrate as Juneteenth, the actual freeing of all the slaves, uh, in the United States of America. And I just wanted to put that out, um, to a lot of people that don't understand what it's all about. It's not just a day off, uh, from work, a federal day off, just like the, the birthdate of, um, Martin Luther King. It really does mean something, uh, to the community here in Michigan City. And I think it, it should mean a lot for everybody to know exactly why we celebrate and have Juneteenth celebrations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay.
Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't see your light.
Thank you, President. This is an event that's going to be happening Friday, June 21st from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Besides the Barker Mansion, there actually is another historic iconic Barker family home in Michigan City, and that's called Barker House. And that's at 444 Barker Road. Um, it's inside Barker Woods, which is part of the Shirley Hines, um, Land Trust, um, preserved there. And we're going to have, um, a ribbon cutting for the rehab of the front entrance. We're also going to be celebrating the 72nd anniversary of Save the Dunes as an organization. And we have our Indiana Dunes National Park as a direct result of that, um, nonprofit organization. Um, the staff is going to be giving tours of the house, um, and they've been doing a lot of research, so they'll have a lot of really interesting, um, tidbits of information to share with you. Um, we hope you'll consider coming and, um, celebrating with us and also looking at the beautiful, um, um, Julian Portico, it's at the top of the entryway. And also the steps have all been, um, re-cast and bricks have been beautifully rearranged. So please come out and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, as an ally of the LGBTQ plus community, I have been chairing the Michigan City Pride Fest Planning Committee for, since its inception in 2018. Um, this year was our fifth year because we had a break for COVID, um, and it was our biggest year yet. Uh, we had 81 vendors and community booths. Last year we had 46, so we almost doubled in that. Um, every year we gain about a thousand new attendees and this year we had about 6,000 attendees. Um, it was the biggest and best day yet. Um, it is, if you haven't been, I encourage you to check it out next year. The vibe in the whole festival all day is such a wonderful feeling. Everybody is friendly, everybody is kind to each other, everybody is happy, it's just a wonderful day. Um, I want to give a shout out to the Parks Department for all of their hard work with us, um, all of the community booths, all of the organizations, the nonprofits, um, the other city departments that have helped with the festival in the past several years, um, but especially this year. So again, if you have not been yet, I encourage you to check it out next year in June.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else, any other Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Yes, um, since, um, Councilman, um, Dabney spoke about Juneteenth, um, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the, um, celebration that's happening tomorrow, um, at, um, Westcott Park, thank you, Charles R. Westcott Park. Um, they'll be celebrating Juneteenth, it'll begin at 11 o'clock and go on until 6:00 PM. Um, you're encouraged to bring your, um, grill if you would like, um, chairs, um, tents to keep cool underneath those. And at 1 o'clock, there's going to be a special recognition of Charles Westcott. Um, his family members are coming in from around the whole country. So there's going to be storytelling by them, about their family and their experience of their father. Um, he was a leader in the community, um, not only guiding and mentoring youth in Michigan City, but I say he was solely responsible for the championship of the Elston High School, Red Devils back in the 1960s. Um, that team was primarily, the, the, the really key players of that team were made up of African-American, um, teens. So this is going to be a great recognition for him, for the park that's been named after him. This is being brought to you by the, um, MBA, um, Association, by the Unity Foundation of Laporte County, and also by Denise Ship. So please come out, celebrate with, um, our whole Michigan City community, this, um, very significant and, um, special event.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments? Uh, I have a few, uh, comments and one of them has, one of them deals with the Southshore NICTY Double Track Project, which I know I have gotten calls from constituents in Michigan City as far as, well, what happens now after the track is done and the lots are not being cut? Debris is not being picked up and construction debris still lays in some of these lots. Uh, take for example down by Lafayette and 11th Street, those two lots over there, they're gigantic lakes and they have debris laying all over. They have been cut, but still it's not to my satisfaction. Uh, and along 10th Street, going from the Amtrak tracks all the way out to, uh, uh, whatever the last street is Sheridan Road or, it's not Sheridan Street, but it's the one past the prison. Okay. Anyway, uh, you know, along there, the easements are not being cut, the trash is not being picked up. And this was all agreed to by NICTY, when this whole project started, that they would take care of it. Well, since then, the city has had a meeting with Nicole Baker, who's the representative for, uh, NICTY and this whole construction project on basically who's going to do what now? You know, this should have been taken care of a year ago, now that the ribbon cutting's done and everybody's walking away from the project, but everything's going to be fantastic. Well, the only thing that's not fantastic are the neighbors that have to get up every morning and look at the trash, have to look at the weeds and everything in their neighborhoods. I don't have to look at it because I don't live in that area, but those people there shouldn't be, uh, stuck with that type of neighborhood condition. So I know that the city administration had a meeting with NICTY a week and a half ago. NICTY's supposed to come back and sit down again and talk to the city and they're hashing out what each party is going to do. But I'm just going to tell, I'm just going to tell the ward council people that have this track going through your ward, that if you're not satisfied with what's going on, then you better stand up for the people that live in that part of town. And if you have to go over to the NICTY office and pour, or Doolin, wherever it's at, over there in Doolin, uh, station, then you got to go over there and you got to do what you got to do. And if this city council has to put a resolution together, holding their feet to the fire to make sure we're taking care of what we got to take care of in this city, then I'm going to write one up. And if you want to sponsor it, fine. If you don't want to sponsor it, that's up to you. But I am not going to get caught on the short end of this deal and the people in Michigan City should not get caught on the short end of this deal. Cause I guarantee you right now, some of the folks that work for NICTY, okay, and some of the, they don't even live in Michigan City and their neighborhoods are a lot nicer. I guarantee you they're a lot nicer than what was left behind by this construction project. All right, we're talking about people that live in very expensive homes, very expensive neighborhoods. Not that I can, I don't hold that against them, but I'm just saying, you got to weigh the two out, you got to stand up for the folks that are left with what they're left with. So, that's one comment. Uh, the other comment that I'd like to, uh, leave with is I agree with the, uh, young lady's comments about the, uh, parking on the sidewalks, parking on the curbs, parking in yards. It's been going on for years and I talked to numerous administrations and we haven't really gotten into it yet with this administration, but we spend $200,000 a year on sidewalks. We just got another $200,000 appropriated through ARP. So we put new sidewalks in and people are parking on the new sidewalks. And I, and, you know, people, and I, and I understand people have a lot more cars in their homes than they did and the streets are the same size as they were back in the 40s and the cars are bigger now. Yeah. And, uh, I understand all that, but whatever the direction's going to be, and I know we don't want to start handing out tickets to everybody that does that, then we do like maybe vector controls should do, which is a fantastic idea by Mr. Kelly, is instead of giving somebody a ticket right away, just put a notice maybe in their mailbox, underneath their windshield wiper to say, this is the city rules, you know, this is how you should be parking and don't do that. What Brett Kelly does, if your grass is over six inches high, he'll put a notice on your front door or in the mailbox or wherever. You get 24 hours to get your grass cut. If it's not cut in 24 hours, well, then they come back, the city will do it and then you're going to get charged $350. So at least he gives you a heads up to what the rules and regulations are. And I think the city needs to go in that direction. I go to other cities, I don't see what goes on in those cities that go on here. And I'm going to take, I'm going to take your concern to the mayor, yes, and talk to her about it. And if we have to have a workshop with the city council and the police department, then we'll do so to try to get things, uh, moving in that direction. Okay? And tomorrow, being Juneteenth, and I understand, thank you, Mr. Dabney, for, uh, for your explanation of that. And also the other important thing that goes along with Juneteenth, it's a national holiday and by being a national holiday means that you can fly your flag in honor of Juneteenth. So if you own a flag, feel free and be proud to put it out and fly it in honor of Juneteenth, of everybody in America and what America stands for. And with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Councilman Cora? Okay.
Second.
Meeting is over.